Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of July 27th, 2021 is now called to order. The time is 6:06. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district mission to be a world-class system. This evening's agenda includes moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, public comments, consent action items, which include three items under Board Office, which one is good cause. As the Chair, the one good cause items is approval of the agreement with Ray &amp; Associates, Inc., as a consultant to the School Board of Lee County, Florida, effective July 28th, 2021, in facilitating the superintendent's search and hiring process for total costs not to exceed $33,000. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. One item under executive services, which is good cause. Dr. Savage, please provide an explanation for this good, for this one item. Dr. Savage?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just missed the question. I'm sorry, Ms.
Okay. One item under executive services, which is good cause.
Oh, yes. Thank you. It's the approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Florida Department of Health, the Lee County Health Department. Again, this was added just because the MOU that's in place before the start of the school so that we have the ability to work with the Florida Department of Health, the Lee County Health Department for voluntary COVID-19 testing and vaccination. That's including but not limited to the COVID-19 vaccine for our students and employees prior to and throughout the '21-'22 school year.
Thank you. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda. Forty-nine items under academic services, which two is good cause. Dr. Savage, please provide an explanation for these two items.
Yes, the approval of the H-48, the e-dynamic learning agreement. This item was added because if it is delayed, the elective and certification courses for the virtual school students will not be set up and teachers will not be able to train on this new program during preschool week. H-49 was the approval to renew the annual contract with the Pace Center for Girls, Incorporated. This item was added to have in place guidelines for Pace and for the district's responsibilities.
Thank you. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add these two items to the agenda. Eight items under business services, seven items under human resources, which three are good cause. Dr. Savage, please provide an explanation for these three items.
Yes, items. J-5 was the approval of the administrative recommendations. This item was added in order to have key staff in place prior to school starting. This was the last available board meeting before that time period and a number of moving pieces according to that. J-6, the approval to revise and adopt the job descriptions as part of fiscal year '22, the budget. There are a substantial amount of those as well, including some additional pieces that were added. And J-7, the approval of the administrative recommendations. This item was specifically added in response to the earlier briefing presentation related to the suggested personnel moves in the reorganization work.
Thank you so much. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add these three items to the agenda. One item under information system, 29 items under operations, which two are good cause. Dr. Savage, please provide an explanation for these two items.
As Madam Chair, the L-26, the approval for the final payment of GT 2006, James Stevens International Academy pre-K remodel. This item was added so that the vendor can be paid in a timely manner due to unforeseen delays. L-29 was the approval of the agreement of City of Fort Myers to support our school resource officer program. This item was added to ensure the safety of the schools and that all SRO contracts are approved at the same time.
Perfect. Thank you. As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add these two items to the agenda. One item under attorney's recommendation and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And would you please record your vote? Ms. Thomas, I'm going to ask for your assistance again, please. Six-zero, motion carries. Ms. Vaughn will lead us in a moment of silence, after which Ms. Morgan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Vaughn, please lead us in a moment of silence.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The character word for July is self-control. Quote, "Self-control is knowing you can, but deciding you won't." The design you see displayed on the screen was created by, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Natalie Gunt, a 12th grader from student at Astero High. Self-control, we all have to have that. Trust me on that one.
Sorry, Madam Chair, it's the wrong name. It's Julie Garcia from Riverdale.
Oh, my goodness. Well, thank you, because on my, thank you for catching that. Julie, I apologize. I had the wrong name on my paperwork, so I do apologize. And your name, I would have definitely been able to pronounce. So I do definitely apologize. And it is a great quote. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. And Mr. Prey Bruno, could you please address the public regarding this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket provided. If you need a blue card, they are located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and public comment will be made from the central microphone in the back. Please be advised that the board does not respond during public comment to remarks made by the speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair, Ms. Jordan, may address concerns or the assignment of any concerns or requests to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow public, speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will only be one warning. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker will be three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30, and one minute if there are 31 or more. Per the policy, the maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective board. Please state your name prior to your comment, and I will call you five speakers at a time. Madam Chair, we have 14 speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Prey Bruno. Is there anyone out in the audience who wish to address the board who has not filled out a blue card? Okay, Mr. Prey Bruno, could you please go ahead and start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, will the following individuals please line up? Ally Locke, Marvin Goetz, Denise Nystrom, Robert Roper, Christine Divageli.
Mr. Goetz, go ahead. You can, as soon as they put the, start the clock, you go ahead and start, okay? And who's doing the clock?
Oh, over there.
Over there. I'm looking, I'm looking with you.
Yeah, I'm looking where you told me to look. I need my time back.
No, you're gonna get it back, because I'm looking in the same direction you are. As soon as it says three, you start, you start talking, okay?
I'm Marvin Goetz, President of Lee County Association of Professional Substitute Teachers. And I'm here as I have been for the last 25 years, meeting with boards of education who do, who say a lot that they all support substitute teachers, and yet the results don't prove it. I have been coming to these board meetings, as I said, for over 25 years. I've heard every board excuse for not providing and supporting your substitute teachers. And I want to bring it to your attention that there will be a meeting on August the 4th at 10 o'clock at the Cape Coral Yacht Club where the substitutes will make a decision whether they're going to work at all. Because we are the minions of the education field. Nobody talks to us. Nobody puts us on committees. They don't listen to us. So, I'm here to tell you today that I'm personally quitting. I've done enough, 61 years I've put in, and I think I know a lot about education, but nobody thinks so. I'd like to remind the public today that 1953, the Korean War ended, and today is the anniversary of the end of the war. An armistice was signed between the 17 nations of the United Nations and the U.S. included, and North and South Korea. So as officially today, I'm quitting. Thank you.
Denise Nystrom, there are a lot of people here tonight, but in general, there's a bunch of us that show up and spend probably 12, 14 hours a day here. And I just want everybody to know that Dr. Savage, who was hired as the interim superintendent, would have the opportunity to become the permanent superintendent if that was what the board decided. And he's so far, he's done a great job, and I don't want anybody being confused about that. The second thing is that I'd like to thank the Board of Education. Yesterday, when we were here, you took a consensus, once you found out that there were 40 community members that did a textbook reading of the English Language Arts textbooks, K to 12, with regard to critical race theory, and you took a consensus to hold off on, or I guess I should say, allow more time to delve into it once we submit that report to you, and we will be working on that very, very quickly. You will have it. With regard to the Code of Conducts, I noticed that they are now available, but I have not seen any kind of opt-out letter in there. There were a lot of laws passed, as you know, that protect parents' rights. And so we took it upon ourselves to create an opt-out letter that we have been actively giving out to community members, and we're sharing that with you now. Perhaps that will be the letter that you want to use. We respect everybody's rights, but we also have rights. So we are sharing the opt-out letter with you, and it is available for anybody that would like it. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ally Locke. I'm a teacher in the district and have been, this is my 11th year. I come to you tonight to ask you to revisit what you just went over yesterday, the health and safety protocols. When you require that unvaccinated individuals have to quarantine for 10 days, I see two issues with that. One, that I know that you are not asking teachers yourselves their vaccination status, that you are getting that information from the DOH, but that does serve as a HIPAA violation because you guys, I don't know if you were in schools at all this year, when someone got quarantined, by process elimination, everybody found out who was quarantined, who was doing what. It's going to be the same this year, and it's going to be a nightmare for people who have chosen not to get the vaccine, because everybody is going to know their stance on it, because they're going to get quarantined for 10 days. But also, there was a major problem with substitute teachers this year. What this man said, I feel, because we had major issues trying to cover for teachers for 10 days when they were out. And in some schools, there were problems where teachers were quarantining themselves for several days at a time, because the district policy was 10 days. So I really think you need to revisit that and think about how that can impact our schools. We don't have the money to pay teachers to cover classes, because you get paid your hourly rate when you cover a class. And there were those of us that were covering classes all day, every day, for months on end, because we didn't have enough substitute teachers. So I ask that you guys review that and take into consideration the segregation that you would be promoting by asking unvaccinated teachers to quarantine for 10 days. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Dawn Armstrong, Lou Navarro, Corey Dai, Daniela Dai, Tara Jenner.
Robert Roper, also known as Ward Cleaver. In October of this year, you have on your agenda to adopt a resolution to recognize the month of October as LGBTQ+ History Month. Can I ask you a question? Why do we need a resolution for such a divisive topic? Is it because the majority of the students need or even want it? Maybe it's because the vast majority of teachers believe that approving such a resolution on LGBTQ+ will result in a better education, you know, science, math, English? Or maybe it's the parents. Sure, the parents across Lee County have come out in large numbers to petition the board to adopt a month to recognize the accomplishments of people based on sexual preferences. It's gotta be the parents. The reality is, it's not driven by the majority of students, faculty, or parents. It comes from a small but vocal number of students that have your ear and the LGBTQ+ political pacts from outside of our conservative county. You might say, "Mr. Cleaver, what is your objection? What or who is it going to hurt? Who would possibly object to promoting and affirming young transgender children?" I'm so glad you asked. It hurts people of faith. It hurts parents that desire to be the ones to discuss these sensitive topics with their own children. It hurts students. Ask the family of the very real student that was affirmed as a transgender by your school at a very tender age and kept it a secret from the parents. You know, you actually know the student that I'm talking about. The student was radicalized by your policy, resulting in the near destruction of that family, ultimately resulting in the student attempting to commit suicide. If you are of the position that this actual, real-life account is not serious enough for you as an elected school board member to warrant putting a stop to all this madness, then you have no business occupying the position you're in. Step aside and allow a person with the courage to actually advocate for the children and especially propagate policy that will protect and not harm the very children you have been entrusted with. 95,000 children are relying on you. One almost died.
Christine Divageli, what I have to say feels inconsequential compared to that, but I digress. I only have a few things, and I like to say that, and then I say a lot, but number one, there are now over 100 action items in tonight's meeting. It's unreasonable to think that community members have enough time to go over that many items and their attachments in a matter of just a few days, with items being added on even the same day that the meeting takes place. If the Lee County School District really wants community involvement, maybe you could stagger the number of items discussed or provide the agenda and attachments a few days earlier than you are currently. Obviously, not for every single meeting, but maybe just for meetings that are this top-heavy. Number two, Lee County School District is currently actively seeking committee advisory members and has encouraged the public to apply. It is my understanding that in order to get a seat on one of these committees, one would need the support or vote of a board member. I submitted my application for the EDEP committee more than a month before the district began advertising for members, and I have yet to hear a single word. I'm very cognizant of the fact that I may not have many fans on the dais. However, I would ask that when taking my application into consideration, that you take the high road rather than the retaliatory one. I will end with this, because now I'm speaking on behalf of the organization that I represent, which is Power to Parents, Florida's first parents' union. I've spoken to several parents and teachers, and they're scared. They're scared because the district, they're scared that the district is going to go back on their word and reinstitute masks, or worse, in the upcoming school year. I was in yesterday's meeting, so I don't need to hear the district's position again. However, this last-minute MOU with FLDOH is very troublesome. Especially number one, Section A, scope of services, Section One, number three. It says, "Testing will only be performed upon receipt of consent of each patient or their parent or their guardian." I urge the board to pull this item and change that language immediately. Thank you.
For the record, my name's Dawn Armstrong, proud parent of two kids that go to North Fort Myers High School. This past Sunday, my son texted me, he's out of town right now, said, "Dad, I've got one of my friends who, he's ill, and he has laryngeal cancer. I'd like to donate a hundred bucks for his treatments, because his mom just passed away recently, too." I said, "Go ahead, son, that's fine. I like the fact that she's got a big heart." So I said, "Let me reach out to a bunch of people and see if I can get people to help out, because he doesn't have insurance and it costs a lot of money, and he's living with his disabled aunt." I sent this board this email Sunday. Only one board member replied. "Do you guys remember what you're here for, the students? No, you don't. What you remember is you want to attack each other up there constantly. You want to attack the superintendent. That's what you remember. You don't remember that we have cafeteria workers in our school district who need your help." No, you forget that. Instead, you remember to send false accusations to the ethics committee of all other board members and fight with each other. You want to talk about going to board training to learn to get along and work together? We teach that in elementary school, to play nice in the sandbox with each other. Why do you have to go up there? Remember, you work for these kids. They depend on you. Do you remember that we have our substitute teachers right now who are struggling? No, you don't remember that. What you remember is having to increase taxes again for an out-of-control budget. Why don't you take a good, hard look at yourselves and each other, and remember, we're here for the kids, not your egos.
Good evening, board members. Lou Navarro, 38-year teacher, Lee School District, 48-year resident. The, I'm asking you tonight, I've taught 38 years. I know none of you have been in the classroom, and only Gwen Gettens wanted to sub for a day. The superintendent, the acting fellow over there, Mr. Sav, Dr. Savage, I don't know what his experience is. And Dr. Atkins had been in the classroom a long time ago. I'm asking you to mandate masks in school for the school year. The CDC said even if you're vaccinated, they're going to come out with warnings. And Dr. Fauci, whether you like the guy or not, he's a good scientist, he said we're moving in the wrong direction. So I'm asking you to take a stance, because if one child, one teacher dies, it's going to be on your conscience, and I texted you, that is if you all have a conscience. Shame on you. You don't care about children, do you? Mandate the masks. If not, give them virtual school. You're not going to know who's wearing a mask, who's vaccinated and who's not. It's discriminatory, too. And kids will cough. Believe me, I taught. I know how sick they get with, with the old flu. Half a cent sales tax. Cape Coral is asking you for some of the money, and I agree with them, for the Oasis and the charter schools. Now, I wasn't in favor of that half-cent tax. You've been very opaque about what you've done with the money. I got the budget, and it just says this school, that school, and even I heard that they took some money out for pay raises when we first got the tax. You need to share that with Cape Coral. And I didn't, like I said, I didn't care for your budget either. And in December, I want an open meeting when you meet, just like Duval County did. And by the way, Duval and Sarasota have given the charter schools some money without the rig of Marola. We gotta vote, we gotta this. That's all you ever all do is gotta vote. Finally, subs? I've been Marvellous Marvin's lieutenant for a long time. That man's worked tirelessly. I told him, they don't want to help the subs. I wouldn't take the chance in there. So, you know what I said? Marvin, DAP, don't answer the phone. That's what we're, all the subs should do. Forget it. It isn't worth a $100,000 hospital bill for, for, you pay the bus drivers better, $15 an hour, and I heard you're going to give them benefits because you're short $100.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker, please. Thank you, Ms. Navarro.
I wanna first start off by saying you guys don't have the authority to mandate anything. Let's be clear on that one. To start out, the comprehensive health that you guys keep trying to push, starting with family life and discussing all these dynamics of sex and anything outside of reproduction, you don't have the authority to do. Stop trying to push it in. Parental Bill of Rights already come forward, and that empowers parents. So on that note, parents, get plugged in. I'm not a member of the parent union that just got talked about, but I think that's a pretty amazing idea. The blanket opt-out form, I think you guys should offer that to parents. If you really cared about transparency and everything like that, you would inform parents, "Hey, you guys can look at curriculum, you can opt out of whatever you don't want your kids learned about." It's ironic that parents have to find that out indirectly to move forward. Other than that, Savage, I wanna thank you again. You weren't here when I wanted to give you a thanks. You're doing an amazing job. Things are getting organized and moving forward, and that would be the one time I would hope they go back on their word. Most likely, it won't happen, because nobody's gonna get paid off doing it. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Jerry Ware, Iris Ramirez, Heather Boyle, Amy Moore, Kelly Stedman.
Daniela Dieh. I do not envy you. Man, everybody has a different idea of what it is that is for the children, and it could be used as a weapon, and it could be used to actually bring some people to progress. And I have brought it to your attention before, that using "as" or "for the children" is the same as, with all due respect, with how you use it. So I've challenged you before to actually look at the "for the children" and use it appropriately, and I think that "for the children" in a lot of situations actually means "for the parents." Parents have the ability to make the best decisions for their children, so I'm gonna ask you to keep giving the parents the rights for that. Corey touched on transparency. Meeting minutes for 2021 are still not online. That's not transparent. Nothing about that is transparent. No accountability for that. There's nothing that says any kind of record without having to go through YouTube, which hopefully it's up and running, and hopefully it's not lagging or there's any kind of problem with it. So transparency, put your information out there, and please get it done. It's already almost August at this point. We have talked about the mask mandate. I'm not sure if somebody else is gonna touch on it, because I know they have a lot of information on it, but Policy 1.181, I'm going to request again for it to be removed. Lee Health has an overreaching hand in the school district. If you look at the agenda for this evening, Lee Health is mentioned 14 times. There are not any other entities for the medical field that are regarded, while they might, I don't even know that they're consulted in the way that they've been brought to the attention of the health officials. There's been many speakers that have come and put their reputation on the line to speak against what it is that you guys are requiring and requesting at times, but there is only one organization that you guys use and are dictated by. So I'm gonna ask you guys to continue to spread out your reach for that and ask other medical professionals with degrees and specialties to give you the information that's being dictated for an entire district. There is a lot of, are a lot of items on the agenda this evening, so I, again, mimic what Christie had said. I don't know how you guys can all get to it. Some of the items that were added today, you were in meetings. I don't know how, like, if you got a bathroom break and we're able to review all that information from your phone or what the case may be, but it's not appropriate for all that to be brought to your attention at the last minute and for you to make a judgment call on it. It's not fair to you, it's not fair to us or anybody else. So I'd ask you to, in good faith and good heart, to be able to vote appropriately, and if you don't have enough information to make that decision, state that, and don't vote for it with the good of the order or the good of the group, because you feel like you're obligated to. You're obligated to everybody else, and you're conscious, you're obligated to the people and for the good of the children. So thank you, guys, for what you do, and keep striving forward without the bickering, because it's been pretty good lately. Thank you.
I'm calling on the board to repeal Board Policy 1.181. It is too broad, arbitrary, and capricious. While the district may have authority over employees to dictate their protective gear usage, mandating protective gear on students, parents, and the community based on, quote, "guidelines, directives, and/or advice issued by the federal CDC, the state Florida Department of Health, and/or local officials" is violative of the natural rights and liberties protected by the United States Constitution, the Florida State Constitution, and many recently enacted state laws. As none of the aforementioned agencies have legislative authority to abridge rights without due process of law, failure to repeal 1.181 leads me to a recommendation, Dr. Savage, that in the alternative, you use your authority under 1.181 and recognize the rights of the parents to do what they believe is in the best interest of their children in concert with their individual healthcare providers and healthcare situations. Medical issues and forced actions based on an ostensibly political or financially motivated entity flies in the face of individual needs and the abilities of parents in the community to address on a case-by-case basis the needs of their own healthcare with their own providers. Board Policy 1.18, entitled "Emergency," still affords the superintendent the option of closing schools in case of an emergency. In the event welfare and safety of the students and employees is required to safeguard the individuals. So it's not without an option available to you. 1.181 is an overreach. Let's see. In an earlier meeting, I was curious as to why Attorney DePravino did not call out one of the board members who, in my estimation, violated board decorum by speaking in a manner that was extremely disruptive and inappropriate to another board member of policy, which we are chided on on a regular basis when we make public comment. And finally, I'd like to, again, remind the board that we have a superintendent, not an interim superintendent. So please remember that back in September 2015, the prior superintendent was sworn in as an acting superintendent, and in July of 2016, the board actually gave him the authority to do a reorganization plan while he was still in that acting superintendent position. So please vote to move forward on Phase One, as proposed by Dr. Savage, on the understanding that this plan is a work in progress and geared to move towards a more functional and open district. Thank you.
Bing, please.
Hi, Iris Ramirez, first time speaking before the board. I've been attending the board meetings in the other room during the mask mandate phase. You can hear? I don't know.
Yes, you're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I just wanted to say that I and many other members of the community stand opposed to our taxpayer dollars, school supplies, resources such as teachers' time, et cetera, for the purpose of promoting sexual behaviors by having a special month or any other activity to promote slash celebrate various sexual activities under the guise of promoting the people who practice them. This is not what our school resources should be spent on. We do not send children to school to promote various social or political agendas. I speak for many when I say that people who are still fascinated by the taste of crayons should not be exposed to sexuality of any type in the school setting. Put the children first, not political or social crusades. School is not a rally or a forum for promoting social change. Please stick to the long-held traditions of educating children, not indoctrinating them. I would also like to add that there is a parents' union forming. You can hook up with them on the web at parentpower, sorry, power2, the number two, parent.org. Power2parent.org. Because, as it turns out, many of the policies that we rail against all year long are made behind closed doors between the school board and the various unions that are affiliated with the school district, and we need a union for the people who are actually paying the bills, parents and all interested parties, to sit at the collective bargaining table and actually have a voice in the policies that are made. So power2parent.org is a way to get hooked up. Thank you.
Heather Boyle, I just wanted to start first with the MOU at the Florida Department of Health in Lee County. I just wanted to express my not support of this. It's concerning that it states that for both the COVID testing and vaccinations, they are performed after the receipt of consent from the patient or parent. This should not be an "or" situation ever, as very few of your student population are over the age of 18. When it comes to testing or vaccinations, how can the parents be assured that they're going to be contacted or that their child will be allowed to make a decision that is not theirs to make? Also, the MOU with Salus Care, I don't think we should be making any agreements with Salus Care regarding children. They are quick to prescribe medicine, and it's always not the best. What's involved in the threat assessment that's listed in the MOU, and based on a lot of the different stuff we've been hearing between the district and what they're allowing the students to make decisions with on their own, how can the parents, again, be assured they'll be contacted prior to any assessments taking place? Also, you have an MOU with the Lee Memorial called Kids Minds Matter. It's very unclear what this program is about, because there is no description really in the MOU. It also talks about a mental health navigator in the MOU, and it states the job description shall be developed with input from the board later. Why are we approving something when there's not even a clear detail about what this position entails related to students? It also states that they're going to be reporting monthly to a child advocacy supervisor. What steps get families to this point? And when are the parents involved in that process? And that's it.
Hello, my name is Amy Moore. I just wanted to say that I feel it's absolutely necessary that we need to keep medical procedures away from our schools. It is not the place of educators to do medical or have medical procedures or vaccinations or any sort of masking or anything. It's really not, it's not your job anyways. I also feel it's necessary to state, because yesterday in reviewing or being here for the entire meeting, that the CDC has removed PCR testing as a means for testing from being a reliable source of testing. So I know that part of the, one of the rules or one of the things that you're supposed to load on included PCR testing. I think you should eliminate that. Also, I would like the board to take, the board to understand that morality should not be taught in schools. I think that is a job that should be taught at home, and it's not any part of the schools to teach that. What is ethical as far as families and all of those items, they don't need to be in the hands of educators. They should be taught at home. Also, I don't feel that any vaccination ban should be at schools. I personally went out and protested last year. I stood up in the pouring rain to try to help people, because I don't feel it's necessary to have those things at schools. So that's all I want to say.
My name is Kelly Steadman. I'm the principal at James Stephens International Academy. This is a proposal for the name edit of James Stephens International Academy to James Stephens Elementary. JSIA is submitting the proposal to build awareness while continuing to honor the community we serve. Recently, our school was awarded the MSAP grant totaling over $9 million, split between JSIA and South Fort Myers High over the course of the next five years. This grant allocates $76,000 a year, one for marketing materials and signage. This will cover all costs related to a name edit. Due to the fact that we no longer offer secondary education or provide a narrow curriculum towards specific vocation, we no longer meet the policy requirements to be called an academy. Therefore, we reached out to seek input from our stakeholders, some of which are in attendance tonight, and the feedback received supports the name edit. This includes community pillar Jerry Ware, who has always shown tremendous support for JSIA. Although this proposal addresses the edit of International Academy, we would like to adhere to Section 5b of School Board Policy 9.10 and maintain our civic pride to the Dunbar community by keeping the name of James Stephens.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Ward, and Dr. Savage. Standing with me is my niece, and I'm speaking on behalf of my nephew. I refuse to allow him to be one of the prisoners to the prison pipeline. He requested to attend South Fort Myers High School because he has an interest in carpentry. You said that you would like for him to develop to his fullest potential, but he's being denied attendance there, and we want to know why. You know how I am. When I advocate for kids, I'm very adamant about what I do. So I'm asking you this afternoon to find out why my nephew cannot attend Fort Myers High School, no, South Fort Myers High School, to participate in carpentry. Thank you very much for your support, because I know someone is going to answer. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Kelly. I want to congratulate James Stephens. Mr. Savage and I, baby, that's wrong.
Madam Chair, I believe that is the conclusion of public comment.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming, and we definitely are here to listen to what you have to say, so I do appreciate you coming in and sharing with the board. Ms. Ware, I think, Dr. Savage, if we could have somebody reach out to her and get that one, that seems pretty, get that one done. That'd be great. Ms. Stedman, good seeing you. Thank you for coming and speaking on your school. Definitely appreciate seeing you, and I know you're getting ready for a good year. Ms. Gittens had brought that before us, and so we're excited that you came in to share. And let's see. Mr. Goats, we, all of our substitute teachers, we do, I, I'm gonna say "I" because I can speak for myself personally, do care about the substitute teachers. I do appreciate what you all do, and thank you for sharing that. That meeting will take place, and that's something that I believe that Dr. Savage will be definitely looking into. We cannot do without the substitute teachers. They're very vital to our system and our children. So I will, and I know Mr. Liu, he was here, and he spoke on that as well, on your behalf. Good seeing him. I haven't seen him for a minute. Mr. Armstrong, I've not had an opportunity to even read your email, but I thank you for bringing that before us about that child. I will definitely look at that. And we did have a lot of things on the agenda, and it has been a, we had a lot of things added. We had a long break, so trying to get everything in that had to be done prior to school made us, well, I know it made me read a whole entire day, that I had to look at what was coming before. So we do take the time to look at this. A lot of the stuff that did come before us were items that we had already seen and that had been presented to us prior, and this was just coming back again. So it definitely has been a lot, so I appreciate your comments, and I know you have groups of people that look at it. We're one individual looking at each one of these, but we, I think we do try to make sure that we do our due diligence on reading this. And then, Dr. Savage, the "or" part, and I know when we spoke about the parents being involved, it was parents would be involved, notify, we would not be doing an "or." It's not with the health that they brought up.
So I can address that. So it's informed consent. Informed consent cannot be given by a child. The reason it says "patient" "or" is because this is also for staff, staff being patient, and then, of course, the parents and guardians will give consent for their children. There's no way that a child can give consent for a medical testing or- or for a vaccination. It must be informed consent, which is from a parent.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, and now.
Madam Chair, before we go in, may I ask just one quick indulgence? I think we would be remiss not to at least congratulate someone that has given 61 years to the school district. And I say that we give a clap to Mr. Gittens.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. Marvin. We really do appreciate you and enjoy seeing you when you're here. Moving on to the next agenda item. The next is the approval of the action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to the board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all of the materials. And we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? Ms. Giovinelli?
I'm not going to ask her.
She wasn't first on my list, but okay. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I'd like to pull J6.
Thank you.
L22.
Ms. Patrica?
J7.
Ms. Gittens?
L4.
Ms. Fawn?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
My pulls have already been called.
Oh, thank you. And I have none. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action with the exception of pulled items L2, L4, J6, and J7?
It's L22.
L22.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were two or 22?
22.
I apologize. So let me restate that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda consent action items with the exception of the pulled items?
I make, go ahead.
L22, J7, J6, and L4.
Yes, I move that we adopt the consent agenda with the exception of L22, L4, J6, and J7.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, and second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Giovinelli? Okay, and please record your vote.
Motion carries, Madam Chair, 7-0.
Thank you. Okay, we have four pulled items.
Can I ask that we recognize those who received?
Yeah, I got it.
Before we do the polls, please.
Patrica, could you please say that into the mic?
Yes, I was asking that we please recognize those in the audience that received promotions or transfers before we go through the polls in the event they want to leave. I'd like to celebrate them immediately.
I think that's a great, and I, yeah, maybe we need to look at that, moving that forward on our agenda. Yes, thank you. Please, Dr. Savage?
Yes, at this time, and I really appreciate that suggestion. At this time, I'd like to recognize the following staff who are in attendance who have received a new either promotion or change of assignment. First, I'd like to start with Lindsay Thorstad from Heights Elementary, from a school intervention support specialist to assistant principal. I'd like to recognize Jaclyn Custra from Veterans Park Academy for the Arts, who was a dean of student discipline, is now promoted to assistant principal. Matthew Kay from Curriculum and Instruction Innovation Secondary Coordinator to Teaching and Learning, to Accountability of Assessment Research, Director of Accountability Assessment and Research. Isuja George from the Department of ESOL, Specialist English for Speakers of Other Languages, to Cypress Lake Middle Assistant Principal. Malagro Sowers from the Department of ESOL District Teacher in Assignment to Success Academy Assistant Principal. April Weich from Harns Marsh Middle Learning and Leadership Teacher to Spring Creek Elementary Assistant Principal. Caitlin Restino from Spring Creek Elementary Teacher to Manatee Elementary Assistant Principal. Misty Smernos from Bonita Springs Middle Center for the Arts Teacher to Veterans Park Academy for the Arts Assistant Principal. Adam Tweet from Mirror Lakes Elementary Dean of Student Discipline to River Hall Elementary Assistant Principal. Donna Williamson from Tropic Isles Elementary Teacher to Trafalgar Elementary Assistant Principal. Stacia Winfrey from Title I Program Administrator to Challenger Middle Principal.
Congratulations to each and every one of you. I know you're going to have a fabulous year and we appreciate you so much. And at this time, we're going to take a five-minute break so that way if you all want to leave, you have the opportunity to leave. Otherwise, you can surely, you know, spend the rest of the night with us.
I think it should be their first duty.
Congratulations.
Guys.
Congratulations.
Yes.
You guys did a great job. Congratulations.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and resume our meeting. If everybody would please take their seats. And we are going, we have four pulls to address. And Dr. Savage, we're going to do these one at a time. So if you would please begin with your recommendation on pulled item L4. Please.
Absolutely. Thank you Chair Jordan. Recommended action L4, approval of Department of Education Spot Survey 5.6, remodel of DOE-approved schools K and NN, now Quadruple A, and unification of Lehigh Acres Middle School with Veterans Park Academy for the Arts. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all necessary documents.
Which one are you doing?
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I'm not, I did not write down who's
It was Ms. Gittens, right?
L4?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. Yes, it was me.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait a second, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation? For L4?
I'll move to adopt L4.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Morgan? Okay, so it's been moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. Morgan. Now we have discussion. Ms. Gittens, please.
Okay, like I mentioned earlier, I'm still just a little confused about information that we get about what is actually happening with Veterans Park. And on one document, I will see Veterans Park Expansion. Another one, I will see Veterans Park and the Old Lambs, or whatever it's going to be called. I just, I'm very leery of voting on anything to move forward with this until we actually sit down and talk about the project, what it is. And I know that there was the discussion about having a super school. I'm just not in agreement with that. And so I have spoken to people, including some builders, that gave me some information that if we, and I can share this with you at another time, but the cost, there's several options to the Old Lambs. And I don't think we've even looked at doing the cost of that. And the numbers that I was giving, given, for example, option one, building a new middle school on the site would cost anywhere from 46 to 48 million. Kind of conservative with the 7% GMP. The fact is, the Chiller system is already on site. That was recently redone. So that would not be a cost that's included in the new building. We would need to include demolition of the old school. But both items are calculated into this 46 to 48 million. Option two would be to leave the existing school and completely renovate it with an exterior facelift, adding of a black box theater between the two schools. And keeping the existing building would save the structure on concrete and steel and site work. And less windows, no elevator would be needed, no stairs. And there's other things. And that would cost anywhere between 35 and 40 million. I look at this project and our need for schools in that area. And I also look at the cost we're looking at of the K through 8 on Three Oaks. At, I think the last amount I heard was like 90 million with the cost of materials, et cetera. And for 40 some million, 50 million, we could take care of an absolute need. And I just don't understand why we can't reprioritize what it is we're doing. So until we have further discussion, there have been times in the past, and you all know that things have come up for vote. And we're told, oh, no, this is only this. And six months later, I get an email when I have a question about it, but you voted for it on such and such date at such and such time. So in order to make sure I am comfortable with it, I am pulling it. And I will not be voting for it at this time.
Thank you. This is regarding the spot survey. Is there anyone, is there any other discussion regarding this? Ms. Giovinelli?
My concern really was, what was the plan here? We really don't even know what the plan is because that's why they want to kind of do a spot survey. And I think we need to be informed more on the plan and looking at the long-term plan. If I remember correctly, this is, yeah, Veterans Park is the one that they decided to move it. And we didn't even plan that. All of a sudden, we found out we're not going to name a school. We're gonna, it's gonna be just moved, they're gonna move behind each other, you know, behind, in the backyard. And there wasn't a real plan for that. And then we didn't discuss it as a board because it was during COVID time and when that school, the new school was being built. We actually went there and did the groundbreaking after the ground broke. I mean, it was, it was, the walls were up. So we christened some beams. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve and not support this this evening until I see a better plan because I feel like that there was one, there wasn't one. At least it wasn't been, it was not conveyed. And as a board, I think that's something that we should be doing is looking at the whole plan. And I think this is not that. So I won't support it either tonight.
Okay, and I think, I'm not sure, Dr. Savage, I know the spot survey is something that we need to have. It's just regarding the land and the property, it's just, it is not dictating anything to us. It is just the next step in order for us to move forward, to even begin to process or build, or even come up with any plans. This has to come first. We're in that stage, correct?
Madam Chair, it would be accurate to convey that this is really a procedural step.
Right.
You know, kind of the analogy that I used during the workshop yesterday was it's essentially trying to create an opportunity for a canvas with which to work. This is simply communicating to the state the change of purpose of the students did, in fact, the student stations that have moved, that it was, used to be identified as Lambs, now is in a brand-new building that is not in the same location. And that the building that was left behind will have a new purpose because it will no longer be associated with that Lamb site. This is simply communicating that to the state and all the, doing it in the format of numbers that are equated to rooms and so forth. However, there's absolutely an anticipation of that changing again each time that information changes, specifically after design work, after the purposes are configured through the design work. It absolutely will come back again and reflect whatever new purposes. And that would, of course, preceding that would be more board work in terms of that design work, recommendations accordingly. Mr. Rickenbacher, I think, is there anything that I omitted?
Can I say something before he speaks real quick?
Okay, Ms. Gittens.
One of my concerns is the fact of how it's titled. I get the spot survey on reallocating the property in the school where the Old Lambs was. I have an issue with calling that spot survey Veterans Park. Because to me, it denotes that it is all one project. And I would feel more comfortable it wasn't. Now, the other thing is, I understand what you're saying about with, the New Lambs does not have room for all the sixth graders, so they have to go somewhere. And rather than using portables, you want to use part of the property in that Old Lambs building. Is it that we need to state that in the spot survey so they can use that facility in a different way? Is that why you need the spot survey?
That is partially correct. In order for us to utilize that facility, we have to be accurate in what we are conveying to the state. So you're going in the exact right place for this. Knowing that we are going to be utilizing that facility, we have to account for how that facility is being used and communicate that to the state, even in a temporary, if we were to change it and then six months from now change it again, we would have to convey that accurate information to the state.
And why can't it just say that we are reallocating this space that was the Old Lambs and call it, you know, JVJ or whatever it is we need to do?
So did you, did you not state that it had to be unified to become one? So it has that one number? And then at any other time, at any given time, we could go back and un-unify that?
Why wouldn't we do two numbers in the beginning, is what I'm saying?
So this is a number, it has to do with the students being served. So the students that will actually be entering that campus would be otherwise students who are part of the Veterans Park. That four-digit MSID, it's recorded as such. So in order for them to utilize that space and have those students be there, we have to record it in the master schedule, as well as all of our FTE reporting. All of those documents have to line up so that we know where are those kids disappearing to. If a teacher is on that site and working in a particular building, we have an obligation to report that to the state accurately. This allows us to do that, in addition to the secondary purpose, which Scott can kind of speak to from a construction standpoint. Scott?
So we have to do the spot survey again if it changes again?
That's right.
Okay, that's, I didn't, okay, that wasn't
So I think what would benefit you is, this was a planning item that was put on the agenda. I will break the agenda into two separate parts. One is the BTAA, the Old Lambs, and the other is Quadruple A. Because I mean, there's no reason for Quadruple A that I'm understanding.
That's the Old Lambs.
No, Quadruple A is pre-K, pre-K, Astero. Quadruple A is pre-K, Astero. BTAA?
Ms. Rickenbacher, can you, the microphone?
Okay, this was a planning agenda. And if you look at item four, there's actually two spot surveys that have been submitted to the state.
Okay, I got two, yeah.
So I'm only asking you is, your discussions, if you don't have a problem with Quadruple A and Astero, then go ahead and segregate that out and do what you want. And then if you want further discussions or you want to post this, I would caution you on, the reason we wanted to use the existing building is the kids were programmed to go into the portables.
Right, no, I get that part. And they, they're atrocious, and I would not support that.
Absolutely, and we're preparing to fix those as well. So the school sitting, when we engage with the contractor and the architect, it's going to take six to eight months for design. So the school isn't being touched. I want people in there for electrical, water, leaks, lighting, utilize the facility, utilize the bathrooms, have a janitor there, staff there. So use it while we're not just demolishing it. And at a point in time, Ed, the principal, Ed Carter, is aware that I will have to tell him when I'm ready to start construction that they'll have to go into the updated portables in the back. And they're fully aware of that. And that helped him save. He had a lot of teachers that were preparing to leave. I would caution you, though, everything is in a time crunch. Everything has been pushed. And in order for me to get design documents created for the renovation of that school, let's say we go in there and we get a new facelift, a new color scheme, redo all the science labs that are definitely there. You need that school open for August of next year. You're going to go through another school year with 800 kid, a population you're going to have to make up for in the zone.
Okay.
So time is of the essence. I think you've got a commitment from the superintendent that he will continue this discussion. So even though you're approving the spot survey for the planning request, that those discussions as to how you develop that campus, what you call it, is still fluid and can be changed in the future. And I don't want to speak for the superintendent.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask our attorney, Mr. Pre Bruno, if I can amend this motion? Can I, I don't know, can I state it currently?
So you can always amend the motion, but you need to advise the board of what the amendment will be and then follow that process.
Okay, so the motion on the floor right now is the superintendent having the vote on this as is. I would like to make an amendment to that motion, if that's okay. My amendment is, I will agree to the K, the NN, and the Veterans Park part of the spot survey without the Quadruple A.
Mr. Pre Bruno, is that a motion when she's saying what she is going to do? She's not making, she's saying if this happens, she will vote on this.
Hold on one second, Ms. Gittens, just so, just so I can understand. The motion on the floor is to adopt the superintendent's recommendation on L4.
Right.
So what are you trying to accomplish? You want to do what?
To remove one portion of that.
His recommendation was to remove.
So you can do a motion
He's not recommending that.
So, in lieu of a motion to amend, you can do a motion to divide. And you can suggest that you vote on the three parts that, and then the other part. It's up, it's up to you. You are within your purview of Pritchard Roberts rules to ask the board to take that into consideration.
To make a motion to divide, to follow the superintendent's recommendation for K, NN, and Veterans Park Academy, and divide out Quadruple A, Astero.
Second that motion.
Okay, is there a discussion? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, for the many years that I've sat on the board and we have had different issues come before us, Mr. Rickenbacher and his team have always come through for us and held their promises and did not ask us to approve things that weren't absolutely necessary. And in this time crunch and having the increase in prices of materials, I think we need to approve this. So I, I don't see the purpose to divide it out. I mean
Okay, well, I do.
Thank you, just a second, please.
Yeah, I just don't understand exactly what, what would be accomplished by dividing it out? By dividing the two sites.
Okay, that's a, that's a motion that she has on the floor.
He's only asking to do
Madam Chair, may I call for the vote? We've discussed this earlier.
Dr. Savage wants to
We discussed
Ms. Vaughn, excuse me. Dr. Savage, go ahead and please.
I just want to ensure that all repercussions are understood of any decision we make here today. Just knowing about the time issues and knowing that we're planning to occupy these areas with students, I would hate to disrupt any of those things, knowing that all the things we want to record correctly, the recommendations as they are absolutely are, you know, what I'm supporting, these recommendations moving forward, not just for the construction side, but for the accurate reporting to the state, for the full intention that we would love to use that what was the Lambs campus for students at Veterans Park, I'm not sure that we could use that campus without reporting it correctly to the state, that it would no longer, it would be, we might find ourselves in FTE-related issues. I would hate to not have the opportunity to just impress upon everyone. And I did put it on the record during the agenda review, and I'll again put it on the record now to try to alleviate any concern you have about the remodeling of that facility. I am strongly, strongly supportive of a reconceptualization of whatever work is to occur on that site. I was the principal at Veterans Park. One of the very first things I even suggested when the school was 1,600 students was potentially even consider it as an elementary and a middle. Those things happened. Those are genuine conversations. I am wide open to all that reconceptualization work. I would hate to throw off a procedural element that we communicate to the state that may have other consequences from an FTE reporting standpoint, from all the aforementioned issues with design and construction, all those elements as well.
Madam Chair, may I please speak?
So we have a motion on the, for the amended motion?
You're confusing what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying.
Ms. Gittens?
I am not saying not to do K, NN, and Veterans Park. I am agreeing to that. What I'm taking out is AAA and Astero. I am agreeing with going ahead with the site thing for Veterans Park and the Old Lambs. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
I am asking to remove Astero.
Okay, so we have, Ms.
I think I'm a little confused because what we're
Just a second, please. We have an amended motion on the table right now. And Ms. Gittens has stated what her change was. So I am going to go ahead and call for the vote, as Ms. Vaughn had asked. Are we in favor of dividing this as amended by Ms. Gittens?
Point of order, was it seconded?
It was seconded by Ms. Giovinelli.
Thank you.
Yes. So now we are calling for the vote. Those in favor of separating it, please raise your hand.
And all we're separating is Quadruple A.
That's correct. Those who are in favor of separating, please raise your hand. Those who are opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, so the motion does not carry. So we're back to Dr. Savage. Will you please state your recommendation again?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
For L4, approval of Department of Education Spot Survey 5.6, remodel of DOE-approved schools K and NN, Quadruple A, and unification of Lehigh Acres Middle School with Veterans Park Academy for the Arts.
Thank you. So we've already had discussion on that. So I would go ahead and then please call for the vote. Ms. Thomas, is it hand vote? Thank you. Those in favor of Dr. Savage's recommendation as stated, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Dr. Savage, could you please read your recommendation for pulled item L22?
Yes, Madam Chair. For L22, it's the approval for the ratification of the agreement to sell 20 acres of the 40-plus minus-acre district-owned property at 12691 Tower Road, Benita Springs, Florida, ZIP code 34135. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. Dr. Savage, do we have a motion to adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation regarding L22? Ms. Morgan?
I move, we approve Dr. Savage's recommendation to approve the ratification of the agreement to sell 20 acres of the 40-plus-acre district-owned property at 12691 Tower Road.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And discussion, Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes, I did not support this when it came through a couple of months ago. And I'm not going to support it now. I don't think we should be splitting up this acreage. Land is very valuable these days. God's not creating anymore. And I think we need to keep the 40 acres together and not split it up to 20 and 20. We were going to put a high school on this. It was good enough then. And then they chose not to, but they, you know, I'm just not going to support it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there any other discussion regarding this? And Dr. Savage, I believe that when this came before us, it was mentioned that the 20 acres was big enough to put the schools that we needed to do what we had to do going forward, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Giovinelli?
And I would agree with that, except that look at how many schools now that we're campuses that we're changing to a K through 8 after, you know, after it was elementary school. And we've done that with several schools. So now we're limiting our ability to increase that and make it a K through 8 if we wanted to, let's say 10 years from now. So I'm just thinking of the future. And I think, like I said, God's not making any more land. So I would say keep it at that price because we're giving it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion, please? See, no discussion. May I have a hand vote for all those in favor of Dr. Savage's recommendation? Regarding L22. And those opposed? Four to three, motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Savage, could you please read your recommendation on pulled item J6?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
J6, approval of the revision and adoption of job descriptions for the fiscal year '22, '21, '22 school year budget cycle.
Thank you. Do I have, is there a motion to adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation on J6?
I'll move to adopt J6.
Ms. Fisher, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. And discussion, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so I just wanted to mention that there are 21 job descriptions here. And I have not had an opportunity today to review them. So I would not be able to vote on this this evening.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Morgan?
I would like to find a superintendent in this state who has given the board one hour notice on job descriptions. I would like to find a board that has voted without an opportunity to read job descriptions to support those job descriptions. I think it's unfortunate that some job modifications, revisions, have been attached to these newly proposed positions because I would have liked to have been in a position to read those descriptions being revised earlier and had an opportunity to vote on them. So I will not be supporting this at all.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Patrica?
For all of the reasons discussed earlier today at the briefing, both during the presentation and during board member comments, in addition to the fact that, I mean, you know, a lot of the good cause items had already been discussed at briefing yesterday. I was able to review, for instance, the contract with Fort Myers-PD. And the DOH was simply an update. So a lot of it I have been able to review, but this is, I mean, this is, I mean, this, this will take a day of reading. So, no, I don't support it either.
Okay, is there, Ms. Vaughn?
I would like to table this until the next meeting, rather than take a vote on something that we haven't had a chance to read. I think it, I, I, I don't know what can be, you know, I know we can separate things. There's one job here that really jumps out, and that's the job of paralegal. And the reason I think that at least that one, and there may be others. And of course, we, we haven't had much time. and of course, we haven't had much time to look, or no time to look these over, but I am especially concerned on that since we are very short-staffed in our legal department, and I know that help is needed there. But still, that said, I would rather see this tabled to the next meeting rather than vote it down. And so that's my-
Mr. DePree Bruno with Ms. Vaughn's asking-
That's the table.
May we make other comments before we do?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Let's see if there's a second to the motion to table.
I second the motion to table.
So at this point, you have a motion to table this item. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
Any, Ms. Gittens, please.
Yes, thank you. And it's, first of all, a question to the superintendent. Did I hear you correctly today say that approving these positions would allow you, in conjunction with those positions, solidify the rest of the org chart and the process and what people would be doing? Did you not say something of that sort or no?
Just want to make sure I understand. Just to clarify, on this particular item, the majority of these items were prepared through the job description review as part of the budget process, the vast majority. Only the four at the bottom of the item were added as part of the reorganizational consideration. So the rest of them were all developed through that budget process and came into, as they would through any other HR item. So these were just added.
So can we then-
I'm sorry, I have to call point of order. A motion to table is not debatable or amendable.
The point of order that's been called-
So there's only certain people that can talk on this topic.
I'm sorry, Mr. DePree Bruno, could you please?
There's a point of order that has been called with regard to the motion to table.
Okay. Can you just, Ms. Gittens, can you just ask your question, please?
At this point, it's just comments on the motion to table.
Okay, so-
But it was, I was commenting on the motion to table. Okay, so are you hearing Ms. Patrica's point of order? Has that been addressed? Mr. DePree Bruno, may I go ahead, or do we have to address her point of order?
So, Madam Chair, it is to you to address the point of order. The only thing I will add to that is that there is a motion to table on the, on the floor at this point.
So our comments should just be on that.
So that's what the comment is on, and then you take your vote. It's not debatable, the motion.
Okay. So, Dr. Savage, just a second. Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Not as a matter of debate, just as a point of understanding. I'm of the understanding that at least one of these positions would have a potential negative issue if a start date were to have occurred as part of the budget consideration and the job descriptions, and they were not approved. That would be an issue. So I would just offer that up for the ones that came through the HR piece as well. Just as a point of note, if any of those positions were to have a start date within the adopted budget that, you know, required one of those job descriptions, that that might be an issue. I certainly have some from Human Resources clarify that piece if that's the case.
We're just, we're tabling it till the next meeting.
May I speak now?
Please.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Based on what he said five minutes ago, what the superintendent said, then perhaps rather than tabling it all, and that was my question, if there are only four items that are in question, perhaps we should divide it out rather than holding up the whole list of jobs that could potentially affect starting school and doing what's best for our students in the next month. So that is my question. Should we not look at going ahead with the positions that our schools are waiting for?
Might I just offer that if the concern with the item is the new additions at the bottom, if that's really the prevailing concern that would have been an issue, then, you know, I certainly think that that would be a fair recommendation to extricate those four, to separate and something along those lines just so that there wouldn't be any negative repercussions on any of the other positions if that is the concern, if that's not the only concern.
Okay, and then my, my one comment will be that, you know, we have stated in our opening, and we say that we have looked at all this information. We know the information. We have read this information. We've received it, as well as the public comments that, you know, come before us and say that I hope you're not going to vote on something without you reading it. And that's what we're being asked to do right now. We've not had the opportunity to look at those, and that would be, that would just not be right for us to look, to go ahead and vote on those that have not been looked at.
Can, may I speak? Okay, Attorney DePree Bruno, I know there's a motion on the floor, but if we go ahead and table the whole thing, there are repercussions. Can we divide, like you mentioned before?
Within Robert's rules of order, if you want to do a motion to divide, then you need to just basically state your motion to divide and state what you're trying to divide.
Okay, I make a motion to divide out the new positions that everyone has said they haven't had an opportunity to read and to go ahead with passing the ones that have been vetted and have been on the agenda previously.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, Ms. Gittens, could you please restate your motion? What exactly are you trying to do?
Okay, my motion is to go ahead with the original superintendent's recommendation for these positions, except dividing out the new positions that are in question and to table those until our next meeting.
Okay, and Ms. Gittens, if I remember correctly, you made the original motion to table, correct?
That was Ms. Vaughn.
Betsy did.
And seconded by Ms. Giovinelli.
Ms. Mr. Di, please, you're out of order. I just want to understand from-
Okay, let me explain real quick.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn, you made a motion to table this until the-
Okay, and the speaker in the audience is correct. I did not initially say that. And then you said something about, you actually said "a motion", and I believe that I said yes-
That's correct.
-at that point. So I apologize that I wasn't more clear in the beginning saying I moved to, but when you mentioned, are you making a motion? I said, I believe that I actually said yes.
Yes, and then Ms. Giovinelli seconded.
And to add to what the reason is, again, I think I've made it very clear today that I am very, very much in favor of the proposed, of the proposed reorganizational suggestions. However, I don't feel comfortable moving along without having seen. Now, okay, so we've had some of these, like, revision of, but I want to see what those revisions are. If you look down below, we have however many, every single one, there's going to be some kind of a change.
Okay.
I don't want to see this go down in flames. And I think perhaps if the board has the opportunity to read these and consider them in a rational way, and myself included, that we may be more successful. I don't see that any of these that are going to, all of the ones at the top, exist.
Okay, so let's make sure this is clear. I did not realize that it was Ms. Vaughn that made the motion. I thought it was Ms. Gittens. Okay, so Ms. Vaughn, you made a motion to-
Table the whole thing. I'm not dividing.
Ms. Vaughn said table.
It was seconded by Ms. Giovinelli. And then you've had discussion. At this point, you can go ahead and move forward with the vote on the motion to table. Then we can go back to Ms. Gittens' motion to divide. If it's still necessary.
Okay. Well, that's what I thought we had to do, but then you-
I'm sorry, it's my fault. I thought it was Ms. Gittens that had made that motion.
Okay. So can we please take a vote on the motion to-
Table.
Table?
Everything.
Table this J, oh, now I'm confused. J6. Can we take a vote on, hand vote on table in J6 in order to be able to read everything? Hand vote, please, on this, table in it? Three, one, two, three, four. And against table in it? Three? Okay, four to three, motion carries. Now, Ms. Gittens-
Does a motion to table require a supermajority?
Just a majority.
Just a majority?
Yes, so at this point-
So now can Ms. Gittens?
No, because at this point, it's been tabled.
Because you thought that it was her, okay.
Yeah, so now we move to the next.
Okay, Dr. Savage, please read your recommendation for the pulled item J7.
Ms. Jordan, before I read that, just in J7, it was mentioned that the item is contingent upon the approval of J6. And so if J6 has been tabled, J7, I would have to pull J7. As a matter of process, I can't, I could not recommend J7 because it would require, as noted in the item, that it would require J6 to have been approved. So I would, I would have to withdraw J7.
So may I ask if we could possibly have to solidify all of this, have a action, a special meeting? I know we have August 16th is our next meeting, which is-
Too far.
Too far away. Is that something that you all would be acceptable to do? That way we can take care of the business at hand?
I would like to make a motion to table this and to have a special meeting for those two items.
Motion has been put on the table. So you can't table a motion that hasn't been made.
I'm sorry, Ms.-
So, Dr. Savage has pulled item G7 because it correlates with item G6.
Correct.
So at this point, item G, I'm sorry, J6 has been tabled to the next meeting.
Okay. But then he wouldn't be able to put that on the agenda. If we had a special meeting, we would not be able to add J7 to the special meeting. Am I correct?
So if Dr. Savage wants to add that to the agenda, J6 and J7, he'll be able to do that.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, cool.
And that way it gives lots of people to read and get all their information.
Yeah.
Ms. Gittens?
I would like Dr. Savage to just inform us of all the other positions on there that were not those four. How are they going to be impacted with the start of school?
I would have to research then and get back to you. Within the budget document, it does state any positions and effective start dates in the budget, if any of them were starting prior to the adoption of a formal budget. Those dates are in there. I'd have to reconcile the two of those versus any of these. I'm not sure that there are any conflicts. Just understand that there may have been, so we'll get to the bottom of that and determine if there's any negative impact. I'm not convinced that there is. I think there is one, that there is a possibility, but I think that one is not necessarily going to be an issue. We may, we may be able to, with a table of this and being able to get it in by the next meeting or potentially special meeting, to try to resolve any issue relative to employee being negatively impacted by this.
Well, our next meeting is not until the 17th, which is after the start.
But if we have a special meeting, that takes, I believe it's four days if I'm correct. Ms. Schaefer, thank you for being here. Am I correct in what I'm saying? It takes four days for the special meeting? So if we come up with a date, we could, within four days, we can have that special meeting, discuss this, that gives people four days to go over all of this, and we can come back and have that conversation. And I know today has been extremely crazy with everything else that we've been going on, but I just think that we have to, we have to move forward.
I would support a special meeting.
So-
We're talking about employees, and this is very important.
Thank you. So J7 has been pulled because of that. So that's the last of our, so the next one on that will be our attorney's recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is the approval of reimbursement for legal fees incurred by board member Melissa Giovinelli as a result of the defense of an ethics complaint that she was successful in in the amount of $8,402.50.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion to approve? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to approve the request for reimbursement for Melissa's, Giovinelli's, legal fees.
I second.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And please record your vote.
No discussion?
Oh, discussion? I am so sorry, I read this word for word, so I do apologize.
I would like Attorney DePree Bruno to provide her recommendation for this request.
Ms. Morgan, just to be clear, when you say provide the recommendation, are you referring to the-
Yeah, I'd like you to go through the law that led you to this conclusion.
Give me one opportunity, and I'll pull up my cheat sheet.
Madam Chair, and, you know, not to be funny or anything, but we did hear that definitively in our other workshop.
But as a member, she has the right to ask Mr. DePree Bruno to bring that back to us.
Okay, so this is coming from a common law doctrine that basically says that public officials have the right to legal representation at taxpayer expense and defending themselves against litigation arising out of their public duties and serving public purposes. In this particular case, it's an ethics commission, and there is a case that specifically says that, under this term of litigation, ethics complaints are considered part of that. The right arises independent of any policy that the board may have. It is not subject to the discretion of the board, but Florida Statute 1012.26, although it talks about civil and criminal, but we know that litigation encompasses ethical complaints, specifically says that the expenditure of the board for reimbursement of legal services in this context shall be made in a properly noticed public meeting.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? See, none. Could I please have a hand vote for the motion? Oh, it's up there, thank you.
Motion carries, Madam Chair, six one.
Thank you. Okay, other business, board member comments, Ms. Giovinelli. Actually, Ms. Giovinelli, if you don't mind, I'm going to go to Ms. Gittens first.
Thank you.
That's okay? Ms. Gittens?
For that, I do have someone that needed to. I have a couple of things, but the first thing I would like to address is, I brought before the board the other day the request from James Stevens International Academy to edit their name for the purposes. I've sent you the information in an email, and I also sent the update. And we do have the principal here tonight that when we call for public comment will give us the most update. There were questions yesterday, such as, has the community been informed? Yes, they have, and she will speak to that as well. And then in her comments earlier, she spoke to the cost and how it all would be handled. So at this point, I would like to turn it over to the superintendent to give your recommendation on this.
Yes, I am fully supportive of the recommendation that emerged from the school and that you're giving voice to now, Ms. Gittens, to modify the name, to edit the name, without changing the substantive meaning behind the name. Still honoring James Stevens Elementary, but doing so- Still honoring James Stevens Elementary, but doing so for all the reasons that we already went through about the academy and the functionality of that piece. I am absolutely, wholeheartedly supporting that recommendation today.
So I would like to make the motion that we support James Stevens International Academy edit of their name to James Stevens Elementary School.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, before we move forward, I just want to advise the board of a couple of things. The first thing is that the policy 9.10, which talks about name of schools, does indicate that there is a process for the public to be involved. However, it also indicates under subsection 5F that only high schools are to be called academy, and this is obviously an elementary school. So pursuant to board policy 1.10, subsection 1F and 7E indicates that the board can take exception to its policy and go ahead and vote, but it will require a super majority, which means five votes.
And public comment?
And public comment, because this was not on the agenda.
I have that on here, yes. So it was, thank you, Mr. DePree Bruno. So Ms. Gittens brought this forward, seconded by Ms. Giovinelli, and now we are in discussion, please. Is there any other discussion that we need to have from the board? Ms. Fisher?
Well, I heard Ms. Sedman say before that they no longer meet the requirement for the title of International Academy, and it sounds like the timing is perfect, so I will be supporting this.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
Now, I will support it as well. I agree. I'm excited for them. It's obvious.
I will do it as well, but right now, so if there's no other comments from the board, we will open it up to public comments. If there's any public comments, anyone that would like to address the board regarding this one motion, please come up to the mic. If, if there's anyone that would like to speak on the...
Name change.
Name change, edit, the name edit to elementary. This is your opportunity to speak on that one. Thank you.
I just wanted to address a couple of areas. I know that some of the board members had questions about community stakeholders having input in this decision. So there's a couple of things that I'd like to address in section 4A, as we know, the naming of the school is an important event in the history of our community, and choosing the best one requires careful thought and consideration. We did reach out to seek input from stakeholders, some of which, again, were in attendance tonight, and really, the feedback was overwhelming. A staff survey revealed 100% of staff members support the name edit to James Stevens Elementary School. 100% of our parent focus group also reflected support for a name edit, including, and I got a couple quotes from parents, they agreed to let me share their information. Ashley Duncan stating, quote, "I never knew what International Academy was, but I would love to see it as James Stevens Elementary." Also, Grandma Pat, who is a community member and also works for the Piper Center, says that James Stevens Elementary is a community thing, and we are a community school. And Susan Pecor pointing out, by having International Academy, you're saying you are something you are not. As well as community pillar Jerry Ware, she has always shown tremendous support for us, and she's also here to continue her support. Social media reflected over a 90% response to support a name edit. Besides this feedback, our school also has been consulting with a marketing firm who is familiar with our circumstances and has relevant experience working with other schools in the district who have been awarded the same MSAP grant. Also with the funding to address 3D, recently, our school has been awarded this grant over $9 million, split between these two schools. The grant I mentioned before allocates $76,000 in year one for marketing materials and signage. This will cover all the costs for a related edit. With this grant also comes an establishment of a new program for James Stevens that we're very excited about to become a STEM magnet school. This new program, we would like our name to reflect that of an elementary school serving grades pre-K through fifth grade. But we also want to, you know, have our civic duty of supporting James Stevens, who has been an influential community member and mentor in the school district. We work with his family quite often, so we want to honor his contributions to the Dunbar community. This name change would conform the style of the school name to that of other schools in the district, while finally removing a long outdated reference to a school theme since past. I'm here to answer any questions, if there are any questions about the items specific to the school board policy.
Ms. Sedman, I think we really appreciate you being here. But I don't think there's any questions. Thank you. So, oh, yeah, somebody else. Please.
Corey Dye, you're a rock star. Continue doing what you do. I support the name change, even though it's not my community, and I hope we have more principals like you guys. Thank you. Thank you, board.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? See none. I will go ahead and do the hand vote, please, on this. All in favor, please raise your hand. Carries. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And thank you again for being here.
Thank you very much, all of you, for that. And congratulations, James Stevens Elementary. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. Ms. Jordan mentioned us going to the closing out of the summer program, the SOS program, and one of the things that was talked about was how do we keep it going and prepare for the next year? So I had suggested that they have clubs in the schools, so it was accepted, and in fact, Mr. Eadie and I spoke about it already this week. So they have students from the program during the summer that can be the ambassadors in the schools that they're in and have clubs like after school or during their club meeting times, and kind of influence other students to learn about how to be an intern the next summer, speaking skills, job application skills, all the things that they learn. So the following summer, we should have a good number of students that are willing to get into the program. And if you're a business, we need you as well. Yesterday, when I mentioned about being at the textbook reading exercise that was done by the community, I did not receive a formal invitation, I just wanted to clear that up. I had spoken to, like I said, many people about CRT, because I am very curious to know why and what people believe about it, and if I have the opportunity to help dispel some things that I feel are not correct, that's what I feel I need to do as Gwen Gittens, not as a school board member. Anyone that I spoke to when I was there, I said, I am not here as a board member representing the board. I am here as Gwen Gittens because I am curious and I want to find out what is going on and what it is that you need. So I just want to make sure. And the other thing, too, there were emails that went to the board members about this particular event, and I believe Ms. Patrica was the only one that had responded. And in my participation, one of the people I was talking to just said, well, maybe, you know, we're going to have this if you want to stop by. It's not a formal invitation. And finally, with that, if there had been a formal invitation for all of us, there would have been a sunshine law situation. The opt-out form was mentioned earlier, and I brought that up in one of our workshops yesterday, and the answer that we were given, it was explained that the opt-out form is already on the website, but you have to go here, there, and everywhere to get to it. So my suggestion was that we move it closer to the curriculum piece or easier to find. And I really think that finding some of the things on our website, not that it's not a good website, but sometimes finding items can be very tricky and difficult. Something as important as the opt-out form, I think it should be front and center so people can easily, easily find it. Again, thank you, congratulations to Mr. Getz, and, hold on one second. You know, someone brought up, too, about the minutes being behind. I know that our staff is like drinking from the fire hose sometimes, trying to catch up, and we also have been, you know, affected by illnesses with family members and our staff. So I would like to propose, someone had mentioned that previously, the board staff was able to get help from other parts of the district and other divisions. That may be a little bit difficult right now because everybody is drinking from the fire hose. So I would like to suggest that we even look at hiring a temp or someone just to help us get caught up to the point that we are current and make it more manageable for our staff. Just throwing it out there. Finally, on Saturday, some of our brave board members, and I haven't heard from a few, are going to join me at Edison Mall for their back-to-school event. And between, it starts, I think at 12, I think it starts at 12, but from 1:00 to 3:00, you will get to see a fashion show beyond all fashion shows. And I am, I have asked the superintendent to participate, and there will be several, he hasn't told me yes or no yet, so. And several other board members and some students and administrators from the school will strut their new school gear, and I'll be, you know, talking about what they're wearing, so. And they, they're also going to just say what their goal is for the year, for the coming school year. So it'll be fun. There will be other people speaking and other things happening, so please come out and support the Edison Mall and the businesses that are doing this for our students. They're also doing a Pack the Bus event, so that they have goods and backpacks and things to give away as well. And we have participated in two events outside in the last few days, so I do hope the outside events are done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Giovinelli?
Thank you. Thank you for voting to pay my legal fees. Unfortunately, I'm saddened that we had to come to that, that it was, because the whole witch hunt was done by someone on this board, so I, I can't apologize for their actions. I can't apologize that I do have to fight for it, and I will continue to fight for those that are in the same situation that I was put in. We are a public institution and a municipality, and I am an elected official who answers to the people, even to those who did not vote for me. I have read several messages, and I have received several calls from employees and retirees from the district about the direction of the district and their desire to see a real change that is so desperately needed. After meeting with the superintendent and on a couple occasions, I believe he has the capacity and potential to bring this change. This change needs to happen, not tomorrow, it needs to happen yesterday. As an elected official, we must stand up and promise to stand against those who bully and retaliate against our employees. If we continue to allow this retaliation against our employees and not report it, the misappropriation of funds, we do not deserve to sit in these seats, and we should be removed, remove ourselves from our office. I am taking a stand, and I promise today, I will, at every board meeting, I will repeat that we need to clean up the district, and I will be here for the employees and for the community. We should not sit here and make, believe that we care about the district and this community, and yet not make any changes. Do nothing. We need positive changes. And we are, we are here to do just that. I'm not going to sit back and see it happen year after year, retaliation against employees. I will be screaming it from the mountaintops. In my meetings with the superintendent and after countless conversations with employees, we now know that the academic numbers being given to us in the community are a farce. While some board members knew this, they made it part of their false campaign advertisement and lied to the public. Dr. Savage was honest enough and is competent enough to acknowledge those misleading numbers, and he desires to bring real change to benefit our students. It is important that we dedicate ourselves to improving and making the best district the entire, of the entire state, and that's my goal, as I know that we cannot achieve that goal by sweeping everything under the rug. Many employees out there are listening to me, and I am imploring you to come forward and that you can call me or report it to the whistleblower hotline, these incidents that are occurring, whether you are an educator, a bus driver, a mechanic, a professional, a paraprofessional, or a secretary. You have an obligation to protect the integrity of this district, and I promise I will do everything to make sure that your rights are protected. I am disappointed to have received a message regarding information that was requested for, or an employee that requested assistance last year from board members who ignored its complaint. I am disgusted to learn that the board members allowed the previous administration to cover it up for, over the violations of state, of our policies and state statutes. I promise I'm not like that. I want you all to be heard, and I want this district cleaned up. Moving people around and giving them new positions is not always the answer, nor is the solution. I said that earlier today, and I'm going to keep saying it. However, a prior administration has renewed contracts. This is not a good solution, but those are the circumstances. The solution is to be forthcoming and honest, to lay it all at the table and bring it, the investigators, to clear up all these questions, doubts, and accusations that take, and take care of our business, and pick up the pieces, and move on like a strong district and organization should be doing. We have, dedicate employees that are not participating in these activities, who are impacted negatively daily by the actions of other individuals. And these employees are hardworking, day after day, day out, in an environment that is not conducive for them. Our children need the best education possible, and they deserve it. Our community, our community leaders and our advocates, who come in and plead on the behalf of others and want to see positive change, they all deserve to see all this happen. So let's do things the way that we should be done, should be done. Let's get down to business, let's do what is right. I challenge this board to do what is right and hold people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giovinelli. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. I gave my comments this afternoon, but I do want to say something about Marvin Getz. He and I both taught our first classes in 1960 in New York. I've known him for a long time, and I'm sorry he's not here now, because I want to thank him for his persistence and dedication continuously over the years to advocate for substitute teachers or guest teachers to be in our classrooms to support the children during the times that our teachers are otherwise occupied. I just want to close with a quote from Oprah Winfrey. "You are responsible for the energy that you create for yourself, and you are responsible for the energy that you bring to others." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Patrica?
So I will, I have put on the agenda for my next one-on-one with Dr. Savage, an organization called Better Together. I'm sure many of you have heard of it. It is an organization that vets families and does several things. One of the things it does is put children with families so that they can avoid being in the foster care system. They also have job preparation, programs for families, and the point is to keep kids out of foster care. It is a tremendous, I think it's a tremendous association, and I was contacted recently to bring it to the superintendent so that we can make the information more widely available to our schools, so that they know about the program, and it's sort of a go-to thing for them. So like I said, you know, I got some information, I'll be discussing it with the superintendent, but I did tell the woman at Better Together that I would bring it to the table and discuss it with you guys as well, or at least let you know it's out there. Do we have a new Leo in the room? Law enforcement officer in the back there, sir, is this your first time joining us? No, you look different to me. I don't, oh, well, that must be what it is. Well, thank you for being here. Well, no mask, that's what it is, all right. You just look different and new to me, and I wanted to thank you for being here, and I'll thank you even though you're not new, so. I would like to thank Dr. Savage for recognizing the procedural necessities of pulling J seven. I want to, I'll go beg the board chair to please, and I know you'll do this, but I, because you're very good about this, but I want to just bring to your attention travel schedules. I have a tremendous amount of travel coming up for work, and I am not going to be available evenings when I'm in other... evenings when I'm in other states, because my meetings start at 7:00 in the morning, and they typically go to 8, 9 o'clock at night. So I just want you to be aware that I've got a lot of work, travel coming up. And then I also wanted to say that on my agenda for the next one-on-one with the superintendent, I have, I have asked to explore why the opt-out form is not a part of focus. If it was in focus, every parent would be required to read it and either choose to opt out or not, and that would be a way of putting it in front of every parent in the district. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yeah, I have a lot of miscellaneous things here. I think I'll start first with saying to Mrs. Giovinelli that I'm very glad that you were reimbursed the fees that we, that we approved as a board, and how very sorry I am that you had to go through that process. I also had, I didn't have an attorney. I spent a long time sending my own responses to Ethics Commission a couple of years ago, and it was something generated by actually a staff member, and it was quite easily dismissed. But we've had way too much of that, and I guess, migrations that, that we have. I know we have spent way too much money on, you know, and some, and some of the investigations are very legitimate, but there are others that fall under the old retaliatory culture, and it's, it's coming from all different directions, so it's not just against me, it's against probably most people on the board from, from one end to the other. And I really hope that we put all of that to bed, and I, and I think that one of the ways that this will happen is when we retire the ongoing culture that we have had in, not only in this district, but the, the old guard Lee County. Earlier today, I referred to it as your grandpa's Lee County. We are 21 years into this new millennium. It's not even the new millennium anymore. We are not in the 50s anymore. Probably Ward Cleaver has left the room, but he may appreciate that. Anyway, it just has to stop. And, and the whole idea, I know we've, as, as a board, we've gone to many trainings, and all of you could see how well it has worked. Sarcasm. And so I don't want to waste any more money on that. Where I want to put my time and effort is changing this culture. And one of the reasons, and I mentioned this earlier today, I want to repeat it, one of the reasons that I'm really loving, at least preliminarily, what Dr. Savage has proposed is because of the priority, the very, I know we give lip service to priority, the schools and the children, but it's been my experience, as someone who knows what it is to give priority to children, having put 38 years into the classroom, we're not. We're paying more attention to power structure. I like Dr. Savage's term of servant leader. I have seen too many people in this school district who are not servant leaders, they are self-serving leaders. That needs to stop. If it takes ruffling some feathers, if it takes some people that don't like it and can't live with it, well, then maybe the best thing is to leave and find a job elsewhere. I don't want to, as, as some of the board members have earlier said, they've used the phrases, "We're losing, we're losing human capital, we're losing key talent." I don't want to lose key talent, but I don't want to lose, but I do want to lose people that are negative and people who, when they don't get their way, turn against and try to submerge others. That's not being a leader. Again, that's being more self-serving. The people that I am most concerned about losing are our teachers, and we have lost way too many teachers this year. A lot of it has to do with the COVID. We had a speaker who spoke about the stresses, and a lot of teachers that were maybe nearing retirement age. I have a good friend that, actually two friends, that retired a year or two before they had intended to because they had health issues or someone in the family had health issues. But it's more than that. We've lost teachers because we continue to ignore the professionalism and the expertise of our teachers. Until we have that, and that's been something I've been advocating for since the first time I ever ran for school board, which was unsuccessful back in, well, it started in 2015, I, I really haven't seen an improvement in that. We, we need to reevaluate the training that, and, and the direction that we're giving to some of our school leaders, and to make sure that they are valuing these people, because as I've said many, many times, kids and teachers, there's a school. Can you do without a principal? You need money, but you know what? You could sit in a field with a bunch of kids and be their teacher. And, and so let's relook at our priorities. Let's also embrace the positive change. Let's get rid of the retaliation. I, right now, am in direct contact with employees from Talc, from Spalc, and even a couple of, they're not high-level, like district administrators, but a couple of administrators that have been the victims of retaliation, that, you know, the whole idea of the whistleblower sometimes not being used in, in the way that it, that it should be. Okay, little change from, from that. I too, you know, Marvin Getz isn't here right at the moment, but maybe he'll listen to the end of this and hear how all of us appreciate him and all the years that he has dedicated to public education. He has a point. He has an excellent point. I don't know why we're not paying substitutes more. I, I have talked to a couple of friends that talked about subbing in other districts that get paid a whole lot more. And the irony is, when we don't have enough subs, as one of the speakers pointed out, how do we cover those classes? We take teachers during their planning period and have them cover. Well, the teachers that are pulled out, they're paid not on a sub rate, they're paid their hourly rate. I know when I was a teacher at Astero, frankly, I hated to be pulled out, because I needed my time more than I needed the extra money, not that extra money is not a good thing, but when I thought, after so many years of teaching, how much they were paying me, and I think they kind of started avoiding and going for the teachers that didn't have as many years, but just think about that. And we on the board, we don't make that decision. That's not something that, that comes out of HR, okay? So I, I think there's a huge irony when we don't have enough subs and we're paying teachers that need their planning time their hourly rate. This is a really exciting time of the year. I kind of miss, even after, it'll be my eighth year not teaching, and I kind of miss all the excitement of searching out the, all of the school supplies that are on sale, and I still buy some of those, I can't help myself, for donation. Already, my board colleagues have talked about the backpack events. Some of us were either out sweltering in the heat, and a couple of people actually spent two days, I know Ms. Jordan did, and, did you, were you there packing? A couple people were there both packing and putting the backpacks into the food, and, and the food into the cars. Wonderful to see the, the parents and the children. The Edison Mall event, I'm not going to do the fashion thing. Anyway, I know there are other, there are other events going on at the same time. I am going to be volunteering, and thank God it's in air conditioning this time, for Guardian Edlydam program of backpacks. And finally, I'm very, very interested in hearing about what Ms. Patrica said about the Better Together. I'm not familiar with that program. I think Ms. Jordan is also a Guardian Edlydam child advocate. We work to advocate for children in the foster care system, and I, I definitely want to know more about that program. And if any of you out there, going to give this a plug, have any extra time in your year-round residence and want to volunteer, you should look into, even if you have limited time, you should look into volunteering with the Guardian Edlydam program, because it's very, very rewarding, and you will be the voice of a child. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan, please.
Briefly, open houses start next week, August 4th Middle School, August 5th Elementary and High Schools. I also want to, I'm sorry Marvin Getz isn't here. I mean, he's been a constant factor since I've been on the board, and, and he has worked incredibly hard on behalf of the substitute teachers, and he has made a difference in, I think, in schools in terms of, of how they are welcomed into the schools and into the classrooms. Let's see. I would like to celebrate the fact that, again, the United Way of Lee County is on the agenda as partnering with us on the Reading Pals Literacy Initiative that will be in place for the coming school year, using volunteers to improve leading, reading and literacy skills of VPK kindergarten and first grade students, and they're doing that in nine schools. That's a huge lift for us, and I, they've just, in the past year, they've just turned, as I've said before, they, they are on this agenda almost every meeting, partnering with us either financially or in terms of human resources. So thank you. I want to thank the Fort Myers City Council for supporting the SRO program. I know that it, it, it took some doing, but I appreciate them partnering with us. I would also like to talk about Trey Davis. Trey has let us know, he spoke to his staff, I believe it was last week, talking about a move that he was making, and I think what is lost in some of the conversations that we've had over the last few days is that this district would not be where it is today in each department that we have without Mr. Davis. He came in, he came in, we had talented people, we had vision, but they, but we really needed the oversight of someone who came from the private sector, someone who had worked in the business and knew how to put together, take the, create a vision, put together a plan, and march step by step financially in terms of enormous savings to the district with respect to changing how we purchase things, $40 million. Grooming his successors. He came in with a plan, he has executed his plan, and he is ready to move on to the private sector. I, I cannot say, and, and I'm sorry there's not many people here to hear it, but human resources, business, academics, none of these departments would be where we are without the work that was done by that division in terms of technology and information systems. That is why I have spoken so loudly about the fact that they are, they are the, the network that underlies all of the operations in this district, and I think that they are critical, and I think we need to continue to recognize their critical role in this district going forward. Not only that, I think about the school district on the East Coast that had to pay a substantial sum for, after it was hacked. So it's not just about what we've done to promote improvements in systems and better use of resources, but it's also about the risk prevention steps that he has taken. So I just want to celebrate him. I, I am so sorry that he is making this choice to go back to the private sector. I am just incredibly grateful that we had him for the time we had. So, thank you, Mr. Davis. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And I said most of mine this afternoon, but when Ms. Morgan just mentioned United Way, and then we have Ms. Vaughn speaking on the teachers, on this coming Thursday, United Way will have Christmas in July for the teachers. So there, the doors are going to be open, and they can go in and just pick whatever they want. So it's going to be their Christmas, and I'm excited I'll be there to help them with all of that as well. Franklin Park, I know I keep mentioning this, Franklin Park has their, their Welcome Back, August 10th, first thing in the morning. They are wanting the public to come there and welcome all the children back. It's a Mardi Gras theme, so bring an umbrella, because you're going to be turning it as the kids walk in and high-fiving them, or however they, you know, if they accept that or not. But it's always a great morning to see all those kids, and they're excited about going in there. Then they also have, and Franklin Park was also looking for donations of clothing. So if anybody, along with Guardian Edlydam, volunteering for them, another plug, they are, Franklin Park is definitely looking for donations for their children with uniforms, any sizes. So I'm just going to put a plug out for that. I know there's always a need in every school for all of our children that just the community has no idea what they need, and maybe that's something that in the future we could have, like a wish list of what each of the schools need for their children, because the need is always so great. But I really had said everything, and Ms. Getz shared the backpack event, so I think you've heard enough from us this evening, and I am going to ask Mr. Pri Bruno if she has any comments.
I have none, thank you.
And now I have Dr. Savage.
Thank you very much, Chair Jordan. I just want to first start by recognizing Marvin Getz. I know he's not here, but I think it bears, just a very quick story. I would not be sitting here today, I would never have done any of the school-based leadership had it not been for the critical role that substitutes played. I was in law school in Jacksonville, and that was what I did at night, and during the day, I worked at a failing school, a school that was never anything higher than an F in the most crime-ridden, most industrial part of Jacksonville. And because we did not have subs, because we could not get substitute teachers to come into the school, they had to figure out what else to do. There was no one there when a teacher was out, and because the conditions are so difficult, we were a middle school of around a faculty of 50, and at any given day, maybe half the teachers would be absent. And so I, as a teacher, would stand in my room for a 90-minute block. And so I, as a teacher, would stand in my room for a 90-minute block, and about two days a week, the administrator would come marching in, a group of students, and sit them down on the floor in between my desks, because there was no room, there were no additional desks, and so I would sit there and have one group, who are my students, as well as a whole other group of students who were sitting on the floor. And about once a week, usually on a Monday or Friday, I'd have a second group of students walked into the classroom, and they would sit, and so there was just enough room for me to stand at the very front of the room, surrounded by two classes of students, many of which I didn't know, and the students who were my actual students sitting in desks, and for 90 minutes, what to do. And so I can say that I personally experienced as an educator the power of, of substitutes. They are unsung heroes, and it's just a credit to Marvin and to everyone like Marvin who is out there going into our schools, and I think on the heels of the pandemic, knowing that it was such a terrifying time for so many people, and how many lives were lost across the entire globe, just all the more appreciation for the sacrifices those folks made. But I've had to share that particular story, and so we'll, we'll continue to look at those issues always. I also want to acknowledge something is that next week, our teachers come back, preschool. I, I say come back, many of them are already there. Who are we kidding? They're, 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 this is when they actually start getting paid for being back, and they're there getting ready for the upcoming school year. And then the following week, our students come back. So all of the talk we've had today, and I just wanted to reiterate that very important moment, and that's really what's at the forefront of my thinking. Yeah, I highlighted earlier today during the briefing how, you know, one of the most enjoyable parts for me of this job was when we got to greet all of our new teachers, hundreds and hundreds of people who are now going to be joining our team, some of which are brand-new from other, other districts around the country, some who are brand-new out of school, who are out there just getting ready and getting excited. We had some folks who came back to the district. I knew some of them because they were former teachers that I even worked with, that had left the field altogether and came back. And I mentioned earlier, one of them was a highly effective language arts teacher on VAM and in, in practice, so it's an outstanding thing to be able to observe. I also had former students that I saw in the line joining the team, so that was exciting for me, former paraprofessionals who had become teachers. It was really awe-inspiring for me to see that many folks in their cars getting their onboarding materials and being greeted by such enthusiastic people, including a one very sweaty superintendent. And just on the point of Ms. Gittens, if, if you have me in a, a fashion show, I feel so bad for the outfit that has to try to carry me. That is a heavy, tall burden.
Well, can I just say, there have been requests for the Miami Vice White jacket.
I bear, yeah. Yeah, the governor, the governor said no on that one. So, so, but all, all kidding aside, you know, I really, I wanted to take this moment to really refocus on, on why we're here, and I think it really speaks to why I'm here. You know, that's one of the benefits of becoming a superintendent. Well, it's true, I'm a part of this governance team, and I'm the executive for this team. I don't ever lose sight of who I'm here for. There's a lot of motivations in, in, in being a part of this position. While I didn't run for this position, I certainly made my intentions known. I, I wrote a letter, I applied, I was very candid in my interviews. I really tried to impress upon everyone that I did not come here just to collect dust and to occupy a title. Unfortunately, I would say as a district office, really in my opinion, the burden is on us. Every penny we spend for a position here, whether it's a leadership position or any support position, that's money that isn't in our schools, so I carry that burden very seriously. I know who I work for, and it's really not the board. I work for all of you out in the community. I work for our children. I work for the teachers. I work for our school leaders and the thankless job that they have to try to create the conditions every single day where staff and teachers will come to work, be supported in their, in their unbelievable charge of trying to reach all of our children. But I also want them to know that I'm here to also challenge, just like I expect those principals to do, to challenge that staff and make them, help them consider how they can be better, how we can reach more children. Well, that's my job here at the district office as well. It's a very different challenge, tackling it in very different ways, but to try to encourage people to look beyond their self, beyond whatever their ego is driving, beyond whatever their power or their structure dictates, and to think, what did I do today to make this district better for children? What did I do today to allow our schools to be better served, because that's who we are here to serve, and that is who I am here to serve? And so I will continue to do that for every moment that I'm in this position, and I look forward to bringing items forward, using the discretion that I have, and certainly operating by the will of this board, because I do respect the fact that all seven members beside me were elected. They were elected by our community, and so they have in, in their role a tremendous amount of authority, and I am that executive that carries out that will of the board. However, as I say again, I know who I work for, and deep down, I work for you. So please hold me to account, continue to challenge me, help me learn how I can be better, how I can better serve all of us, and I encourage every staff member in our building to do it, I encourage every leader out in the school, whatever I can do to be better for you and to help our district better serve you instead of whatever it is that, that's been going on for quite some time. We have a lot of room for improvement. I want to be a part of that solution, and I, I certainly don't want to contribute to any of it in a negative way, so I'll continue to try to be better so that I can do that effectively. So thank you very much for the time for the comments today.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Our next scheduled meetings of the board, on Monday, August 16th, there will be a board workshop at 1:00 p.m. On Tuesday, August 17th, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 p.m., followed by an action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no further business to come before this body and seeing no objections, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night, and have a safe evening.